Morning, everybody.
Morning.
You notice we don't have microphones in front of us today? Somehow or another, the charger didn't work. So, we've got it sold right here. So, if we can get a register on there where it shows it's actually recording.
It is.
So, speak loud. Talk real loud, okay? We'll make it work somehow. Uh, today is July the eighth, twenty twenty-five. Registering Commissioner's Court, number county Texas, looking to show the American flag is present today. If you do have this court, court. First things first. Now, let you listen with the pledges.
Please face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
All, please, bow your heads and pray with me. Father God, we come to you with heavy hearts today. We ask that you please be with all the many family and friends of those who were lost in the flooding in current county. Ask you to please be with the family and friends of the Burgeses and their young daughter. We ask that this bring us together to try to help and heal the losses and the pains, help us understand or trust where we cannot understand. Father God, I also ask you, please be with the Commissioners' Court this morning as they make decisions for the county. May they be in the county's best interest. Give them patience, wisdom, and the courage to speak their mind. And we also ask protection for all police officers, first responders, and we thank you for them, their dedication to us all. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Matthew. Notice and proclamation. Do you know if we have any notices of proclamation today? We have a resolution. Public comment, nobody signed up, Lee? Uh, where topic's of interest? Anybody have a topic?
Item twenty, but I believe it's going to be tabled.
Let's make those. We don't have the seven, seven agenda. Sure y'all have a chance to look it over? Any add-ons today?
I do. And we have a payoff for Deputy Charles Stagel in the Sheriff's Department. His unused vacation time is three thousand six hundred seventy dollars and eighty cents. Unused comp is two thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars and ten cents. And no unused holiday time, and his longevity pay will be six hundred and thirty dollars for a grand total of seven thousand fifty-three dollars and ninety cents.
Put all the add-ons. Moving to refer to consider agenda with those add-ons. Can't miss them. You have a motion for a decree.
No, second.
Second, Judge. To approve with the add-ons noted. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, most appear second. Moving to the regular agenda. First item, uh, eight-one from this area, so the county attorney's office consider and approve the twenty twenty-sixty TCD RS plan assessment as is at the elected rate of seventeen point five-two percent and the group term life at zero point two-seven percent. We'll add to that.
That's really it, Judge. So, um, TCD RS comes out every summer with their rates for the upcoming calendar year, and the court several years ago decided to do the higher elected rate, even though the calculated rate had been reduced by TCD RS. So, I would recommend that the court continue with that higher elected rate, seventeen point five-two percent. It has done wonders to our funded ratio, even in light of two back-to-back years of COVIDs for the retirees.
Let's say the court.
Make motion to approve.
Motion for Bruce, second is David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Number eight, two, from this areas. Consider and approve the following agreements with Prosperity Bank. One is a treasury management services management agreement. Two, selection of treasury management services. Three, treasury management services, check positive pay service terms. Four, treasury management services, remote deposit capture service terms. Treasury management services, ACH origination service terms. And six, treasury management services, ACH positive pay service terms. And number seven, Prosperity Bank notices and disclosures. Yeah, that's a big list. Is there anything you want to kind of clarify for us on here?
That's a big list.
Yeah.
So, as you on that, Prosperity Bank is our depository, and we have that contract with Prosperity. I spoke with Marcia yesterday. And any terms that are within the depository contract will trump anything that is in these agreements, but these agreements are standard working agreements with regard to the treasury management system that Prosperity Bank has with their online system and so forth. So, um, I think everything in it is fairly standard, and as long as we are assured that the depository contract is keying over these agreements, then we're good.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, Bruce, second, David. Any further discussion?
I think so.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, aye. Is that motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. Number three for me is consider and approve salaries and allowances of elected officials of the county, that's fiscal year twenty twenty-six, to sections one five two point zero one three, of the Texas Local Government Code. This was notifications put in the paper what these numbers are.
Make a motion. Second.
Motion for Greg. Second for Bruce. Any further discussion?
Judge, I have a question. This is statutory, that we have to approve the elected officials' salaries now? I'm not used to seeing budgets that are passed kind of in a piecemeal manner, you know, like to see what the revenue side is and where our expenditures are going to be, then try to make sure that we're all on board with that. So, I have a little reluctance on that side, that this is the way the law reads.
We have to do it now in time for elected officials to have an opportunity to file grievance and go before the salary grievance committee. And all of that to occur before the final passage of the budget where these figures will also be.
Just for a grievance process to take place.
Well, yeah, you're running time, if you're not careful.
Okay.
Which ultimately, moving on what the judge said, if you don't approve it by a certain date, the end of September, then we revert back to last year's budget.
Thank you.
All right. I've got motion for the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Number eight-four, from the legislature. Consider and approve a local grid between the county, Chris, and four of the city of Kenneth. Divide safely and well, eight of the roadways, blue and green streets, for the citizens that are using space by avoiding costly duplication of manpower, equipment, and other resources. Your standard interlokal.
This interlokal does pay a little bit per month, not enough to do significant road improvement, but the city of Kenneth has been successful in getting some grants in the past couple of years. And this is just continuing an interlokal that's been in place for a number of years. Again, it makes us legal in what we do down there.
Second.
Motion for David. Second for Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-five from the Sunday. Molyneux baseball, come on out. Think you're going to be here for just a little bit.
It's the Sunday hour.
See, y'all missed me when I was on the table.
We did. First, I would consider and approve a paper request in the amount of twenty-one thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty cents to Grant Works for invoice E one seven one dash zero zero two dated May the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and June the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five for a twenty percent completed countywide master drainage plan for the GLO CDBG, uh, mid-mod contract twenty-four zero six five zero one four E one seven one, copies of the invoice are attached to the packet. And this is ongoing project.
Yes, sir.
We'll be seeing more of these as they come in. Hopefully, we'll get some, maybe the next year.
I know. I'm excited.
Motion for David, second for Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-six, consider and approve a paper request in the amount of nine hundred, excuse me, start over. Oh, I would run. Yeah, six hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred fifty dollars to the LGA engineering invoice number two oh two five two two five seven six, dated six thirteen for engineering services for the GLO CDBG mid-mod contract twenty-four zero six five zero one four E one seven one, attached to the packet, copies of the invoice, and status memo number fourteen for the review.
Right. The status memo has line item and what the percentages are for anybody that has questions on those.
And again, this is for our.
Mid, the mid-mod, yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for Bruce, second for David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-seven is consider and approve your request for nine in the amount of seven hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty cents for GLO mid-mod contract twenty-four zero six five zero one four E one seven one. LGA invoice number two oh two five two two five seven six in the amount of six hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. Grant Works invoice number E one seven one dash zero zero two in the amount of twenty-one thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty cents for a total of seven hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty cents. The draw request and invoice are attached to the packet for review. Pretty simple, Judge. Any questions?
Can we pause for one second?
Sure.
I had a little glitch here. On number five, uh, Molyneux's number five, who did the motion?
David.
David, who did the second?
Greg.
Greg. And everyone voted for it, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Number six?
That was, they had made a motion and Greg.
No, Bruce made it.
Bruce made the motion, David, second.
Okay, yeah. Bruce, David, and everyone voted for that. I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Sometimes it just flex out on me a little bit.
Got a mind of its own.
It's tired of years.
Yeah. It's a tired operator, too. So, we're on number seven, yes?
Yes.
Okay, I caught it then. Go ahead.
So, what say the court? Motion for Dave.
Second.
Second for Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, aye. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-eight, consider and approve Sterling conditions section two, two-part variance request as follows. Feet foot raised on the cul-de-sac, minimum front building is up, long lines was supposed to be of twenty feet for lots fronting along the cul-de-sac and levels. LGA engineer letter of objection to the request of variance along with a letter request to the variance attached to the packet for review.
I apologize because I missed this one when I brought all of the Sterling.
I think we approved one and three.
I think they did, and I had missed this one when I was bringing the whole packet in.
You good with it, Bruce?
Yes.
Motion for David, second for Gerald. Any further discussion? We'd like to discuss the heck out of this man. Call for vote, all favor say aye. Likewise, aye. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen.
We got beat up pretty good.
Yeah, we did. Number eight-nine, consider and approve amendment to number eight to GLO contract number twenty zero six six zero one three C zero nine five. This amendment is an extension of time for the housing buyout program. This amendment does not have any extra money included.
Correct.
Just going to extend the buyout time.
Exactly, so everything can be filed correctly.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for Bruce, second for David. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all favor.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-ten, Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir.
Discuss and take action on the contract between Dayton Lake Estates.
Yeah, Judge, this is another one of those first things I've, first time I've had to address this kind of stuff, so I just thought it best to bring it to the court, at the same time be discussing it in front of the county attorney as well. We've had some informal talk about it, but situation is, if you recall, as we get new entities that the Commissioners' Court want me to collect you on, you enter into a contract, and basically it has certain requirements on both parts, and both of them can be dismissed either way. But the whole idea was a consolidated collection rather than everybody having their own tax accounting and all these kind of things. So, that's worked well. We're collecting probably for twenty-six or twenty-seven entities. It's working fine. We've run into a little snag with the city of Dayton Lake Estates. Basically, once the process we're about to enter into for twenty twenty-five, which the county participates in and all the entities, they're required to furnish us with certain information so that we can prepare their truth and taxation calculations, so that we can come up with tax rates for them to consider in their budget, just like we do for the county and all the entities. And of course, you're mandated as an entity to provide that information to us by September thirtieth, or the penalty for that is you go back to the rate, the lower the rate for this year, or what it was last year. And it can be a pretty good penalty, you know, your rate, with your values going up, the rate kind of goes down. So, you're kind of getting a double, double hit on it. If you're using a higher, if you're using a higher rate and higher value, you're really doing your, doing your taxpayers wrong on those entities. Well, of course, we sent out, just about this time of year, we sent out to the N V saying, hey, we need this information, a couple of weeks, get it back to us. They never responded to that. Of course, we processed it based on some information that we can get from the C A D values and all those things. We rocked along through the deal. We actually calculated the rate for them, did all that stuff under the assumption of what information we had was, you know, was true. And again, we're talking about twenty twenty-four taxes, but we're trying to prepare for twenty-five right now. So, for twenty twenty-four, we did collect their taxes. We had to charge them the higher rate because they failed to ratify the, the action you have to take except in the higher rate. They have like five business days from the time we sent them the rate out after December thirtieth. We did that the first couple of weeks in October, never heard back from them. And then finally, November first of two thousand twenty-four, we informed them that we were going to be holding their compensation checks until we, you know, we didn't have much leverage on them. We've sent out a correspondence call. I don't know the status of the city council, the city of Dayton Lake Estates, but as you know, there's a history there that they've had some disorganization, had some reorganization, but we have certain people that we contact, and every time we sent out checks before, they cashed them. So, we assumed that the money, you know, was getting done, but without having the resolution, we felt like we needed to hold the check. So, we're holding about seventeen thousand dollars of taxes that the taxpayers paid, you know, paid in. We just not have, we have not dispersed that back to them. Again, trying to get their attention, to go get the ratification, and then start working on twenty twenty-five. We have not heard anything back. We sent it by certified mail on November first, saying that we were holding the money and that they needed to contact us, and to this date, we have not gotten anything from them. My concern is, and I've talked to some of the council outside attorneys that we, we were at a conference last week that had, one marketer was Purdue, one of them, and just mentioned to, you know, said like, that contract is with you and the entity. And I said, well, in our case, it's with the county that authorized me to collect, but really, there are certain requirements, and, and as much as I hate to do it, I don't feel like I have the authority to continue to collect for them if they don't respond with ratifications. And again, there's probably an opinion out there on saying, well, as long as you assess it and get it done, but that's not the way I read it, you know, that, that I think we, they should, there should be some responsible body that says, okay, we recognize our rates higher, we ratified that at a city council meeting, and we authorize you to go ahead and collect the taxes for us.
They're receiving the check, and they're cashing the check.
This was previous. That was twenty-three back. We have not sent them a twenty-four check. We, you know, we pay those out monthly, and we've, we've just been holding them, you know, since November.
Matthew? This is a little bit.
Yes, it sure is. It is very unusual.
We're running into the same problem with them on their water supplies and something else.
They don't, nobody out there knows who the mayor of the city council is.
No, exactly. And so, I, I mean, the only, at this very moment, I think the only responsible thing to do is continue to do what you do, which is hold on to the money until we get a solid answer. I think it's going to take an A G's opinion at the very least to give us some direction.
I agree. I wouldn't send any more money out there.
Agreed.
You have some kind of organization.
We have no idea who's going to be cashing these checks.
That's right. Yeah, this is taxpayer money.
That's some of my concern, that, you know, we're sending it out, but now we don't even have the ratification, so we've kind of stopped all that. You know, the year before, we did get, you know, we, twenty-three, we did finally get it across the line and got it, but for twenty-four, we have not gotten anything, and I'm assuming it's going to be the same thing for twenty-five. So, I'm concerned about even starting a new, you know, they still have the right to collect taxes. I'm just not, if we break, if we amend this contract or break this contract, I'm assuming that they'll have to get someone else to collect it for them.
Yes, that's correct. I would think so, too. But if, if there's, you know, if there's a council that can act and make the decision, right here.
Well, we've attempted.
Yeah.
I know even the water, saw them there with, out of the water. I mean, it's, and I know the T C Q's trying to make contact, nobody's supposed to.
Yeah, I have to go out there with T C Q every time because they can't find anybody to go out there with them, though.
So, when you start sending money out to that situation, I get a little uncomfortable with it. So, again, I'm not saying we have to break the contract at this point. I'm just concerned about going forward with collecting for twenty-five and holding fast on sending my twenty-four money. So, I'll just kind of bring it up to the court at this time, hoping there may be some way of contacting them. I don't feel like I have any connections out there other than what they provided for us, you know, the secretary and that kind of stuff in the past, but. Can, no. I haven't, and I don't feel comfortable in.
I'll go out there with you, but you.
I mean, if they're having meetings, that's fine. I don't know.
I don't think they're having any meetings.
I would assume they'd have to be published in those, and, you know, it has to be a public meeting.
Can you, can you continue to collect taxes and hold the money until they meet all the requirements in the contract?
Well, code kind of says for us to actually be able to collect it, they have to ratify that, you know, that rate, and they didn't do it for twenty-four. So, I'm kind of on, I think I'm kind of on.
So, you don't have a right to.
I don't think I have a full, of the full enforcement of the code. We did, you know, it's in place, we sent out statements, the taxpayers responded by paying it. So, we're holding all that money. I just, I really wanted to see if we should continue that process even going into twenty-five, still trying to reach out to them, or we just, because I'm, I'm assuming it's just going to continue this way until something.
What happens when a city fails to act as a city? There's got to be a report somewhere.
There, there does. It's, and I don't know the answer to that. We're going to have to get A G's opinion, perhaps, maybe.
At this point, we need to continue what we're doing and holding money and get some legal advice, get some legal opinions on what we need to, how we need to go proceed forward on this, because I don't think any of us here know exactly, nobody out there knows any of the.
Right.
Is that your motion?
Hang on, I'm working on it.
And that is my reason for bringing it up at this point to, you know, as well, and Matthew and I have had conversations about is just, again, where, where we go forward with the contract.
And I can give a bigger staff to see what.
And these contracts go back to Judge Kirkham, a lot of these, nineteen eighty-six, a lot of these contracts that are in place when we originally, and I assume they were one of the original ones back then, so.
They've got a lot of problems out there. Nobody even knows who the mayor of the city council is anymore.
Yeah.
When I go out there with the water people, you can't find anybody.
Yeah, it, it's something that's kind of, like I said, we've had in the back of our mind, but now while it's fixing to go into twenty-five. So, I, I guess what I'm hearing is we're going to still continue our process for twenty-five, like we operate under our contract unless we get.
Unless you get word of it, but in the meantime, don't distribute.
Yeah, we keep following the money, you know, like I said, it's not a big amount of money, but still, at this point, it's around seventeen thousand.
Yeah.
And the people are paying it. I mean, that's amazing, you know, with no accountability, I guess, so.
Okay, what's the motion?
Yeah, I just need some operating instructions.
The motion is, motion to have the tax assessor collector hold the tax collections for the city of Dayton Lake Estates until an appropriate city government structure is in place, and the, and have the county attorney's office seek an attorney general opinion regarding the status of the city of Dayton Lake Estates.
The only other thing I'd add is authority, talk to Baker staff on this issue.
Yeah, I don't need to be attorney general, it's just.
Okay, seek legal opinion, okay.
And then addressing the twenty-five, we'll bring that up again. Okay, we'll continue on with.
First, catch your motion. Greg's.
I'll second.
You wait for attorney general's opinion, we'll be here.
Yeah.
We're a little slow.
We might find it.
Yeah, motion for Greg, second for Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all favor.
Aye.
Likewise, aye. Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you. I think I'm next.
Consider, and number eight-eleven, consider and approve reimbursement to the county tax office for one hundred dollar county bill collected by the tax office on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, Cleveland, somebody washed a ten-dollar bill and turned it into a hundred. Yeah.
Amazing.
The way they do it.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for Bruce.
Who reimburses it?
Nobody. Actually, the U S Selective Service seizes the money and then.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we turned it into, the bank caught it through their counters and stuff, a little more sophisticated than ours.
All right, we got motion for Bruce, second for David. Further discussion? Here you go. Call for vote. Call for favor. Likewise, may. Motion carries. All right, number eight twelve, Ms. Webb. Ms. Webb, come on up. This is the lady with all the good news all the time. So we pleasure having you here with us. Consider through the twenty twenty-five, eight twenty-six grant budget for fifteen thousand dollars in funds for the Veterans Assistance Fund, Texas Veterans Commission.
Yes, so I wanted to, um, uh, we, we have a grant awarded. So, um, the budget that we had in place for, uh, twenty-five, we're going to continue with the same budget. And it's, um, covering the, the client services with the mortgage utilities and, uh, rent. And also it covers the client intake specialist salary as well as the grant office, um, supplies.
Okay. Motion, David. Is that you, Greg?
Yes.
Second Greg.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Here you go. Call for vote. Call for favor to say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, number eight thirteen from Mr. Poston over to County Attorney's Office. Consider approve lease agreement between Lurie County and Charles Williams for eighteen oh one Trinity Street, February, Texas, seven five, seven five. I believe y'all already received the, uh, agreement if you haven't, uh.
Yeah, the new update.
Yes.
Anybody have questions about it?
Make a motion to approve.
No, it's eighteen hundred dollars a month, um, for a two-year period. Uh, it seems like the lease automatically annudes unless we say otherwise. Um, and then rent will increase ten percent.
If, if we continue past that two years now.
Yes, exactly.
All right, that's in court.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion approved. Second David. Any further discussion? Here you go. Call for vote. Call for favor.
Aye.
Likewise, may. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number fourteen from Sheriff, consider approved resolution to memorialize a portion of Highway three twenty-one, seven, Cleveland, as the Richard Williams Memorial Highway. And I understand that Sheriff, this is the first step we have to take.
Correct, yes. The resolution's approved, we'll go to text dot and they'll make sure it's okay. And then, uh, they have to agree with the roads. We're, we're proposing to start up just a little north of where the plumbing company was where the incident started down past the Red Chain. And, uh, then we'll figure out, uh, they'll figure out how much the sign is, but we'll pay, uh, have donations to pay for the sign. We'll count, cost the county any money. We'll count, uh, but we will, if we get it, be responsible for the upkeep of the sign.
Second.
Motion, David. Greg, any further discussion? Here you go. Call for vote. Call for favor to say aye.
Aye.
I decide this resolution, pass. Number eight fifteen from Mr. C, consider and approve the extension of the current term contract for asphalt overlay. I T B number twenty-four eleven, September ninth, twenty twenty-six, resulting materials asphalt construction, LLC exercising the renewal option. And if applicable, execute in the due.
Okay, current contract for asphalt overlay is up in September. They agreed to extend it for another year. That was included in the actual contract. So y'all choose. Same, same rate that we're already paying.
Make a motion to approve.
We don't get attention. So listen. There's a motion for Bruce.
Yes.
Second Greg. Any further discussion? Here you go. Call for vote. Call for favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight sixteen from Mr. C, consider approved payment application number eleven from light construction with about a hundred fifty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and eighteen cents for the Northwest Annex Project.
Do we have a completion date on that?
Jim is here. Jim, can you come up and visit me? Jim Schneider with, uh, Light Construction.
I don't know the exact date, Judge, but it's very, very close. Within probably the next thirty days is what I think. Um, everything's going fine out there right now.
Yeah, it looks like. Coming all good.
Yeah, we're doing great. Thanks for the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for Bruce. Second David. Any further discussion? On favor to say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, may. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eighteen seventeen from Mr. C, consider approve appointing Catherine McCarty, Dwayne Gott, Billy Knox, Commissioner Karmowski, and Commissioner Clark to act as a review evaluation committee for items relating to the construction of a new jail.
And we'd like to add County Attorney Matthew Poston.
Okay.
No, I'm happy to, happy to serve. Uh, I would bring it up to the court. I don't know how much, um, sense it makes to have commissioners who are voting on the ultimate terms on this committee as well. But y'all, y'all might consider some other folks, uh, in, in place of, uh, Commissioner, Commissioners Clark and Karmowski.
Okay. Rick, consider him.
Well, I meant, look, no commissioners.
No commissioners.
No commissioners.
Yeah.
He wasn't just picking on me and Jerry and Cheryl.
I think we need, need one, at least need one commissioner on there. Personally.
Yeah. He's the most distinctive one that I know of on there, but, uh, other than that. No, I think, uh, others. Then we got, uh, Captain Matthew. We got our checkbook. We got the chief deputy.
Yeah.
Got Bruce and Gerald.
Those four to be by.
Matthew?
Yeah.
What's your thoughts?
I, I, I'm sorry, too many conversations to go into what time.
You think it poses a conflict?
Uh, well, uh, it just, uh, it makes the committee a, uh, instead of, uh, producing, yeah, it, 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 it kind of nullifies the, the need for a committee. Might as well have, uh, the commissioners do it themselves. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I think, uh.
Yeah, Sheriff, you got any recommendations to, to somebody to put on there?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's four.
Huh?
I'll do it.
Okay, then we need one more.
How about our fire marshal back there? Yeah, the woman's turning around looking for somebody else.
These windows are all open. It's a twenty-foot jump there, Andy.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to accept all names changing out. Commissioner Karmowski, Commissioner Clark to, um, Sheriff and Nathan, the fire marshal.
I'm writing Nathan too.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Um, let me go over this real quick, make sure I got it right. Okay, the appointment will be Catherine McCarty, Dwayne Gott, Chief Billy Knox, Sheriff Bobby Raider, uh, Fire Marshal Nathan Green, and County Attorney Matthew Poston.
Yeah.
That's the committee?
Okay. Now we have a motion.
Bruce, sit down.
Yeah.
One second.
Greg.
I'm with you now.
All right, we got a motion, Sam. Is there any further discussion?
We would like to stay informed how the committee progresses.
Okay, here you go. Call, uh, call for voting. Call for favor to say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, may. And motion carries.
This is going to set a new precedence on the way we do bidding.
Yep.
Oh, yes, a, a written order on this, uh, will be needed. We'll follow up with it right after this, since we have the name.
All right, number eighteen eight from C, consider approved call and protection indemnity insurance proposal for the Sheriff's Water Craft Assets for coverage beginning July thirteenth, twenty-five through July thirteenth, twenty-six through McGriff Insurance Services for an estimated premium of ten thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. That's a lot of money for a hairbrush.
I think it's both votes, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Anything to add to that, uh, motion to approve?
Motion, Greg. Any further discussion?
The Matthews' votes are, if they're in here, that's the, uh, the term.
Yeah.
Like seventy-five thousand and one.
I know these, they're brand new.
That is a lot of money for insurance. All of a sudden, you spoke to, you got clients. Uh, we haven't had any clients know, but if y'all remember years ago when we added the airbrush, it came from, uh, precinct three, the airbrush donated to us, and we picked up another one. They couldn't get insurance there for a while. It was very hard to obtain, uh, using for emergency services and everything else. So, yes, it, uh, probably it's about very few companies that would ride it according to the clear.
Okay, so is it, is it for, uh, you know, damage to the bugs themselves, or is it?
Liability is, is that, is all these up? So, all these up?
All right, now motion Greg, second David, considering any further discussion? Here you go. Call for vote. Call for favor to say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, may. And motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number eight nineteen from burden, consider and approve the following increases to the district attorneys. Senate Bill twenty-two, rural salary assistance grant allotments. Adam Pierce, thousand, uh, Over Goodwin, thousand, Jason Hendricks, five hundred, Kayla Ebert, uh, forty-two, seventy-seven, sixty, Anna Emmons, forty-two, seventy-seven, sixty, Mark Moyo, forty-two, seventy-seven, sixty, Steve Denman, forty-two, seventy-seven, sixty, and Kevin Barnes, forty-two, seventy-seven, sixty. Again, that's Senate Bill. This is money that they had in the beginning of budget year that allocated, allocated to a position they had to fill. And the county attorneys and, uh, DAs, Senate Bill twenty-two, they can only spend it on salary. If they don't spend it, it goes back to the state. And so, like, I think the sheriff, if they have extra money, they can buy equivalents for it, but they can't. That's, they get to give to these people, send it back to the state.
Second.
Motion, David, second Bruce. Use it or lose it. Any further discussion?
So is this just for this budget year, twenty twenty-five, and this money will go away? The salary adjustment?
Yes, it looks like it will.
It's going to be paid out in a one-time increment. What's, how's, how's it going to go along?
It'll be appropriated the rest of the budget.
Through, through the rest of this budget year, and then it'll go away.
And then we start over again on October first. They'll get another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to supplement the salary. I think it's two seventy-five, two fifty.
As long as the legislature approves the credit, the other will come in. I thought this was for the unused amount for a position we didn't have.
Right, and this is state money. This is not county money. This is state money.
So we're not, there, there won't be any plans to add a position where, where that money would be consumed?
No.
There was a vacancy. It's for the appellate position that we haven't filled yet. Once De Taylor retired. So the extra money is allocated to the trial attorneys. And so it'll be used for the appellate attorneys, and just one aside.
All right. But on October first, they'll start a new budget on. Everybody there? Any further discussion? I've got a motion from David, second Bruce. Call for vote. Call for favor to say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, may. And motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty.
It's been moved to Thursday.
Yeah, we, uh, let's, still, let's go ahead again. Have a motion, but can't, can't we take no action? What's the court's procedure?
No, they take no action.
Greg, so take no action. Okay, motion from Greg, second David, take no action. Any further discussion? Here you go. Call for vote. Call for favor to say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, may. And motion carries. Number eight twenty-one from Mr. Poston, consider and approve petition. City of Dayton to Annex Road Rolkey, and Stilson Roads located precinct four. Lurie County Text, Jerry, you want to get up to roads?
Yes. No, I, I, I saw this when this agenda item came out. There's, there's a lot of, uh, been a lot of discussion here with some mail issues. I don't know if this is the resolution to that, Matthew, you have.
City of Dayton believes it will.
Because, you know, these were Rolkey and, and Stilson for many years. When the county started naming a, uh, a miracle, uh, names, when the nine-one-one system came in many, many years ago, and changed to that, now there's just all this confusion because the Rolkey family apparently granted some concessions and gave up some things so that, to maintain that name.
Yeah.
And so, uh, it's, it's been a mailing nightmare for the people who were developing that and paid for it. I guess, turds, I think those roads out there, so, uh, there's certainly no issue of, uh, moving up that, uh, to the city of Dayton.
Yeah, so there's a, as I understand it, a, a donut hole where we have a counted road, but on either side of that is, uh, uh, is city street. And so if you happen to live in that donut, it kind of causes confusion, not only from AL, Phenomenal One potentially. And, and, uh, so the city of Dayton has asked us, uh, to give it up, uh, and they'll maintain it, and, uh, they're willing to take that on.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, Bruce.
I wish this could have a later being named later, then, uh, be another road.
Do they want any more roads?
No, they, they, these are, these are industrial streets.
They are just, they're not going to any major many years. Yeah, Stilson Road is, doesn't give a why. Okay, any further discussion? Here you go. Call for vote. Call for favor.
Aye.
Likewise, may. And motion carries. All right. Uh, we've got executive session two items on here, so I'm going to have the court, to move it to executive session at this time. First of all, uh, Michigan's court, County Attorney reserves the right to adjourn him to executive session anytime. And of course, this meeting to discuss any other matters listed above. It's authorized by Texas government code sections five five one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney, five five one zero seven two, deliberation about real property, five five one one zero seven two five, deliberation regarding contract we negotiated, five five one point zero seven three, deliberations about gifts and donations. We don't see those very often. Five five one point zero seven four, personnel matters, five five one point zero seven six, deliberations about security devices, and five five one point zero seven, economic development, four one eight, one eight three, security matters. These two will be to discuss with our county attorney's office. So they would be, uh, listed as consultation with attorney, five five one point zero seven one. So at this time, I would ask the court to move to executive session. Any motion?
Make a motion, go into executive session.
Motion, Bruce. Second David. Say aye.
The recording has stopped. Being recorded.
We are recording, Your Honor.
All right, it's, uh, eleven forty-nine, eleven fifty. Eleven fifty now, because we're back in regular session, and there are a lot of items that show actually there was discussion items. So at this time, I would ask that, uh, y'all would consider adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Aye.